Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greitath.
Here.
Chairman Bowman.
Here. Items three additions, deletions, changes to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we add to the agenda Resolution 1914, apportioning taxes for 2019, and Resolution 1915, supporting four-year term commissioners' terms for the state of Michigan, and delete the Change Order Review Committee policy revisions.
Support.
That's item Q, correct, on the...
If we could do R...
No, 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 I'm not saying the thing that we're deleting is item Q. Policy 137, Change Order Review Committee revisions, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And if we could add Resolution 1914 as new business, item S, and Resolution 1915 as new business, T, I think that would make it work.
Most support, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item four, the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion when you approve the agenda as amended.
Support. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item five, the minutes of the previous meetings, items A and B.
I would make a motion to approve and file the minutes of the 9/26/19 Commission meeting and the 10/10/19 Standing Committee meetings.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Items six, the Proclamations, A and B. What we'll end up doing with these, we're not going to read them into the record tonight. We can just take them both at one, in one motion, and we will get those to the appropriate bill. You're going to be going to the...
Veterans.
The veterans, and then you will be going to Mayor Damon, or Duke on that particular...
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to support, or I'd move for the approval of the proclamation recognizing City of Mayor Dan Damon.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item B.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the proclamation recognizing Don Callaway as Veteran of the Year 2019.
Support. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Consent agenda, items A through C.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve items 7A through 7C on the consent agenda.
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
Parts of standing, special committees, Chairman Greitath.
Nothing other than if you are a Verizon customer, how many people raised your hand had trouble with Verizon today? All right, good. I wasn't alone. They did have an issue today. I was notified by Henry Ford Hospital where my wife works that they got a letter saying that they were having an issue and a map showing outages all over the place. And I got a call from Central Dispatch to let us know that Verizon was having an issue. So just hang tough. They're probably tweaking towers or whatever, so that's about it. Gets me upset, so I talk about it, now I feel better. Thank you. Now your phone will work better.
Yeah, go back to your home phone if you don't like it.
I got a little pile of things.
One quick thing, back to Cape Back Road, our St. Clair County Road Commission. I talked with Bill Blumerick, and the project is ahead of schedule, so it should open up before November 15th, and they're doing a fantastic job over there. It'll be able to maintain the truck traffic over there.
Did you say that last week?
Yeah. Want to do it again.
Duke?
No, sir.
Greg?
I'm good.
Georgia?
I attended the SEMCOG General Assembly meeting today, and Dave Struck was a presenter in one of the sessions this afternoon. They were all very well attended. And the Black River, or the Blue Water River Walk was also featured in one of the morning sessions. So it was nice to see some St. Clair County things represented at SEMCOG this morning. And I'm just to let you all know, the ribbon cutting for Fort Gresham Middle School is tonight at 7:00. So depending on when, where we are in the meeting, I may have to cut out a couple of minutes early to make it up for all the bond work that has been done. The Kiwanis School, Thomas Edison were done last year. Fort Gresham Middle School is just wrapping up with their bond improvements. And tonight's the ribbon cutting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, Doc, you pay accordingly.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Nothing at this time.
Just one quick thing, next Friday and Saturday, the Friday, they have a charity preview party going on at the St. Clair Inn. It requires a donation to get in there. You can go on their website, there's more information. The Saturday event is the ribbon cutting, which is open to the public. It's a free event. It's at 10:00, and then it's till 2:00. Current people to go in and sign up for time slots if you want to take a tour, because there's going to be like 1,000 people, if not more, that are going to show up for that thing. So we're, there's, there's blocks that they're trying to fill up to make people conscientious show up at that time. I got to give the owners a lot of credit. They came up with the charity preview party idea for the St. Clair Inn, and all the funds that are raised, they are paying 100% of the expenses. All the funds raised of that are going to veterans and kids programs in St. Clair County. The monies will go to the community foundation and then be distributed to that. So, big deal. Cool stuff.
On that, David.
Just so you know, if you do need a head count from the county committee who's attending, I will not be there. If you remember the couple I married at last year.
You married a couple? Wow.
Anyways, they got married at, out at our farm. His son was found dead three days ago, so we'll be going down for a funeral.
Okay, we're going to move on. Citizens wishing to address the board, I've got Wendy Martindale, 1421 Connecticut Avenue for the veterans' application.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself as one of the applicants for the Veteran Affairs Committee. I am a Navy veteran, come from a family of military as well. I currently am the Veteran Navigator for St. Clair County Community Mental Health. And in that role, I interact with veterans on various levels. I do a lot of community outreach, so we interact there. I help them get into mental health services as need be. I work to, or I help them get their veteran benefits, whether it's with paperwork or appointments and things, to obtain their benefits. So I feel like I kind of have a good connection. It's been a long time coming. I've been in this position for three years now, and now my name's finally getting out there, and I'm getting veterans just to call me that I've never interacted with before. So I think I have a good pulse on the veteran community right now. That's about all I have. I just appreciate your time and consideration.
Yeah, thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Okay, item 10, no unfinished business. Item 11, new business. Item A, approval of county dispersments.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the county dispersments for September 2019 in the amount of $49,443,334.37.
Support.
Discussion on anything?
Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chairman Bowman.
Yes. Item B, the title, 4-E, Child and Parent Legal Representation Grant Intent to Apply.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve the title 4-E, Child and Parent Legal Representation Grant Intu, to apply, and to apply in the amount of $73,437.25.
Support.
Discussion. This is just an application, correct?
Is that the one that Mike wanted to talk about? Or something else?
If you feel compelled, if you don't...
Okay. I'm all set. I'm all set on that, Mike. I don't need it.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item C, the Health Department Staff Development Day.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the closure of the Health Department at noon on December 13, 2019, for staff development.
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item D, the Veteran Affairs Committee Appointment. Jay has ballots, pick three. I'm just happy that, truthfully, I hate to say this, but a lot of times we have a hard time finding people that want to serve in particular committees. We're very fortunate here that we have, that we have actually seven people, and we got a chance to hear from all of them, and I think they're all very well qualified to serve in that capacity, so it's a good thing.
He's going to be tallying those up. Do I do make the motion now?
I'm sorry?
To close the nominations.
Do I have a motion?
Y'all make a motion to close nominations for the Veterans Affairs Committee and our casting ballot.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
See what it takes so long to get results back after elections now? Riley Township gets them in faster. We don't want to talk about that. All eyes are on you, Jay. Don't screw it up.
She's double checking me. Somebody with a math mind's double checking me.
Can't read our writing.
Have the bean counter watch them. All right. In no particular order, the three nominees that received the highest number of votes, there's three vacancies, correct?
Yep.
All three. John Beebe, Joseph Belly, and Paul McGyver.
Okay, those are our three. All right, moving on. Item E, the contract approval request for Everbridge. What do you want?
Good evening, everybody. I think we're going to have a PowerPoint here. So I know there were some questions last week, so I just wanted to, I created a PowerPoint to hopefully answer some questions. The first couple of questions were, how does, how would Resident Connect, would we be able to turn it off and on in a, in a situation where we may not want to have access to that data set? First off, how does the data set work? What does that mean when I say data set? So basically, it's a spreadsheet that they load into WINS, a set of numbers, a set of telephone numbers, voice over IP, right? And so they would give us an additional set of data that we would load in. We already get white pages, we already get yellow pages, we already have user-entered data, and this would just be an additional spreadsheet that they load into the system. So what you see on the screen here is basically all of the different data sets that we can click on and off to, to send out alerts to people. Can everybody see that? So Resident Connect would be another block up there. It would actually be three blocks, right? It would be, it would be a total of six. So we would be able to pick and choose who we want to, who we want to access, depending on the alert we want to send out. So, Bill, to your, to your worry, we could, we could choose, you know, cell phones. Maybe we wouldn't want to hit those cell phones for that particular alert, depending on what it is. So, so we're able to capture that, turn that off, and then send out the alert. And then also, depending on what we're doing, we would draw a circle or a polygon around a particular area when we're sending out that alert as well. So that's how the system works. I'm not sure if that helps alleviate the issue. But having that opportunity to have that data into the system only helps us in an emergency situation to ensure that we can target the most amount of people, or hit the most amount of people as possible, for the WINS system. So I hope that that helps answer your question.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Is there any other questions that I can answer?
Justin, what's a trigger point?
What's a trigger?
What would be, what would be the reason we would do this? Is there, is there something in writing that says the only time that we would send this out is it has to be A, B, or C?
So, yeah, so we are, we would be, once we have the data, we would work with all the divisions and departments to create those trigger points. That's something that, that we're working on right now, and we are talking, we're, that's going to be a topic of discussion at the December, or I'm sorry, the November Fire Chiefs meeting. We talked about it a little bit the other night at our October Fire Chiefs meeting, but once we have the data in the system, we're going to talk about it at the November Fire Chiefs meeting, the November Criminal Justice Association meeting, and the next, the next Homeland Security Advisory Committee meeting. So once we hit those three meetings, then we'll have a set protocol for when we would use that data, if that makes sense.
Okay.
I guess my question is, so this information has not went to the larger group to say, yes, we want it, or no, we don't? The Emergency Management Advisory Group, or whatever. Greg, what's that group, you guys?
The Homeland Security Advisory Committee.
Homeland Security Emergency Management.
So we have preliminary talk, preliminarily talked to quite a few people on that group. It did not go for a vote yet. Basically, what we did is, we had some conversations, and there was no negative feelings. There were nobody that said, no, that's a terrible idea, don't do it, right? And the only conversations were, hey, let's talk about how we want to use it, once we have the opportunity, right? So, so that's, that's where we were headed with it, is how do we want to use the information?
But it just hasn't, because I look at stuff like this, and I know very little bit about this, nor do I care to learn a lot about it. But the groups that we entrust, or call it what you may, to, to make the decisions, I would, I would personally want them to say yea or nay on it, right? That's just me talking out loud, and if it hasn't been to that yet, that, that's the only hesitation I would have. I'm not going to say it's not going to not happen. You know, I don't even know if we have the possibilities to pull this piece of it out, approve the contract, and then this would be something we'd be able to add on after it goes through, through the circuit, per se, you know?
I got three questions. Back to your point, the trigger points. You don't know what those are yet.
So, so are we talking protocols, or?
Right.
That's what we're talking about, is protocols?
Right. You don't know what those are. It could be a tornado, for example.
So we already have access to what we used to call white pages and yellow pages, right?
Right.
So that's all we're adding, is VoIP, white pages and yellow pages. Basically, the old-school white pages are now the VoIP white pages, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting back to what I believe Greg asked you, was the trigger point.
Yeah.
On who's going to send this message out.
Maybe Russ can...
I'm Russ DeCresc from the office. Basically, the protocols that are already in place is we only use this for life and safety measures.
Right.
So number one, the only weather-related event is a tornado warning, and only for the area that's affected. Outside of that, in the past six years, we've probably used all of the white page and yellow page data for life and safety, less than, less than five times.
I think we used it once for the, for the wind event, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And depending on who's at the desk, who controls sending this up.
Central Dispatch.
Central Dispatch would. This wouldn't get sent with Central Dispatch.
Well, I think our office used it one time during the straight-line wind event.
Because that's one of the concerns, and back to...
There are only two places that send these alerts, period. My office and Central Dispatch.
Okay, because that, that's kind of been the question, and the concern is that, go back to school that Bill was talking about. You got a school room full of kids with their cell phones, you happen to send without St. Clair High School. There's a tornado in the area, and now the guy's going to talk to the teacher, maybe he doesn't have his cellphone, and if you do that, then you could have chaos that shouldn't happen.
Yeah, the WINS, the WINS system can only be triggered in two places, by my office and by Central Dispatch.
Right. Now, your office, depending on who's sitting at that desk, wouldn't always be you, you're not going to be there 24 hours, but somebody, they inadvertently, without talking to Central Dispatch, triggered this.
So everybody in my office is vetted through this system?
All right.
Yeah.
And we got, from the cover letter you gave us, there's potentially three costs. Original contract was $67,575, with the new contract $52,874.99. If the Resident Connect is removed from the contract, the cost will be $46,575.
Correct.
This is an annual contract, correct?
Correct.
Can we add the resident after, like, let's say, six months down the road, after you talk to the Fire Chiefs, that everybody is part of your advisory board, and if they determine that it's a good idea, because this hasn't been discussed with them for an up and down? You said, nobody said definitely it's a bad idea, but this hadn't run by them, so that is a concern, and that's what brought all this tonight. Can we add it within six months, three months, whenever you get an answer from your board?
Yes. So, yes, that can happen. So the one thing I'm asking you to, to take into consideration is, the only thing we're adding is VoIP access, right, and cellphone access. So if you think of it in these terms, it's just like the old white pages and yellow pages, right? So the only thing we're doing now is we're advancing to the 22nd century, and we're adding in the new white pages and yellow pages, right? People have cell phones, and they have voice over IP access now. They don't have landline, they don't have copper landlines anymore. That's all we're doing. That's, that's the only thing we're doing.
So may, may I ask? So, so right now, the way, when something is going to be sent out is not being proposed to change.
Correct.
What types of messages are not being proposed to change?
Correct.
You're just adding a new...
Data set. Yes.
Okay.
Correct. We are changing no protocols at all.
Like, I, I don't have a home phone, I have VoIP at home.
Correct.
So I don't, I can't, I, you know, have never signed it up for WINS or something like that.
Right.
So nothing is changing, any, any messages anyone in this room has ever gotten, nothing of that is changing.
Not a bit.
It's just a, a new place to send it.
Just a new spreadsheet being loaded into the system, that's all. That is all we're talking about. Yes, sir.
I have a question regarding funding, and this is funded, grant-funded?
Yes, sir. Completely.
Anything else? Greg, you go to the meetings, I mean, what's your thoughts?
Well, we don't want to go back to the rotary phones, and, and how's we're doing is saying, I understand Bill's concern, you're an educator, and you're going back to when phones were in schools. They're dealing with that on a daily basis. Every kid has a phone, and they're on their phones all the time, and whether we think they know it or not, they're going to get this information. So I'm not alarmed about, if there's, if there's a situation where we have something of any magnitude, we need to be letting, it's not up to us to say, I don't think we should send it here because it might upset some kids, or we shouldn't send it here because it might be a nursing home, and, I mean, what if the tornado misses it by a half a mile? So don't let them be prepared, because we don't want to scare anybody. This is an alert that says, and I get them wherever I go. When I'm in Florida, I get these alerts all the time that show up, and I've never registered my phone down there anywhere, right? They, it knows where you're at, and it, and it follows you.
I guess more my question to you would be, should we take it back to the advisory group and have them...
Well, I think the advisory group is going to add to this functionality. Right now, we're saying, let's bring it on with, alls we're saying is, we're going to change the amount of people that this is giving access to. We're not changing protocol, we're not changing anything. Once it goes to the fire departments, they might have a different, they might have a whole different reasoning for what they want it for. They might, in their area, want to have something go out when there's major rainstorms coming in, and if that's what they so choose in that particular area, maybe that's what is going to be able to happen there, and we can change protocol. But right now, it's not changing, if we sent it out last year, and we're going to send out the same message this year, it's just going to go to a different, it's going to go to more people. It, it's going to hit everybody that, that we have a contact number for. So that's all that's changing right now with this. Once Justin can get the information from, and, and it's not, it's going to be the Fire Chiefs, it's going to be the Police Chiefs, it's going to be through Central Dispatch, it's going to be through the Emergency Management, and everybody's going to have an input, and if there's something new that comes out, and there's going to be more added to it as far as how much, how many times you'd go out, or what protocol is going to be, then, then we're going to see that, and you'll have a chance to say yes or no on, on that. But I think right now, alls we're doing is saying, we, we want to go from the old phone book...
To a new phone book.
To the new computer system.
Right.
That's going to, going to let everybody that has access to a phone get access.
So you're fine moving it along without the, taking it to the other group and getting, I guess, buying from...
I, I don't think that, I mean, if we go to the fire departments, are they going to say, oh, we don't want this to go to anybody with a cellphone? If you're going to say, we don't want it to go with anybody with a cellphone, then let's just cancel the program, because...
Please don't do that.
Let's go to our numbers. What do we have, 60,000?
The numbers are right here. So this would be the addition, right now, if we go back one slide, and I can't see it because I'm over here, but this is our current list, and what is the current, there's like not 8,000 people signed up. We have another 12,000 or 13,000 that we get from the white pages. There's like 9,000 that we get from business, nine or 10,000 from businesses, and it almost, I mean, this is what it does when we get, that's our total numbers when we get the VoIP and cellphone hits, so...
It goes up to 86,000.
Right.
So I mean, if, if the idea is safety, then this is where you want to go.
And the very cool thing that we get from this is Everbridge is going to work with us to make sure that we're not double, triple, and quadruple hitting businesses. They're going to program it so they're only hitting businesses one time when they have large PBXs and things like that. So they're working with us to, to control the, the hits on the, on the phone systems as well.
My two observations are, if it's weather-related, you're already getting it through your weather apps on your phone, and that goes to every phone, goes, all three of my kids have a phone, and goes, their phones go off, they know about a weather event before I do, because I don't have it in my face all the time. The second piece is, I would much rather have a controlled message go out from a valuable source, or a reliable source, than somebody getting it off Facebook to find out where, what, what's happening. And so when these events come up, you see that, and people are following along, or they're listening to a scanner where they're only getting bits and pieces, it's going to these pages that people start, and so I think an official notification is probably safer than anything else.
Right.
So just, just my two cents.
Greitath.
I tend to go along with Commissioner Rushing on this one. I, I think if we approve it tonight, minus the Resident Connect, and then Justin and his group can go back, because I'm hesitant to do it without seeing what the protocols are, what the policy is, of who sends it out, what they send it out for, how they broadcast it, and I'm also, I, I've been on that committee many, many years, and I know the people that sit in that, in that room on all of those meetings that you guys have there. I mean, you've got chemical, you've got fire, you've got... you've got fire, you've got police, you've got EMS, everybody that you can imagine, from citizens to business people sitting on that committee. I would like to know what they think about this.
I think you're going to...
I guess I'm thinking in terms of pushing it through this way without the resident connect, get that information and bring it back to us so that we can vote on the thing as a package, not say, go do it, and then bring us your policies, and we look at your policies, or anything like that.
Other policies, though, aren't changing with this.
Our protocols are not, our protocols wouldn't change. Regardless to whether we get this new data set or not, the protocols for winds are not changing.
Am I still gonna get my winds notification?
Absolutely.
Because I've signed up for that.
Yes.
But I would also get this one.
No, 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 no. It's the same one. Just because, just because you're on, you're not gonna get four notifications, you'll still only get one.
So if I've never signed up before on winds, like, you've signed up, right?
Correct.
You've put in your email.
I've volunteered for it.
If I've never done that, this data set, it's now going to come to me.
Potentially, yes.
Potentially. So...
Yes.
So that's, it's, it's the outreach. But the protocol, the rules, how, when, why?
None of that has changed.
So the only thing that another group would say is, we either want more phone numbers or we don't want more phone numbers.
Correct. The data is the only thing that's changing here with Sinclair County winds.
But the other groups are gonna be looking at changing, if, if they wanna use it for other things than it's being used for today.
Right.
And before that changes, it comes before us.
Yes.
Now, I hate to go back and be redundant of what I've already said, but I have talked to a couple of people in the school system, and that's the one part that bothers me more than anything, is because they have protocol. I talked to a building su-, or school superintendent, and I said, do you have a protocol? He does have a protocol in place if there is an event. Let's use, for example, a tornado watch is in the, conditions are right for a tornado. The superintendent knows that. He notifies his principals. They know that. And from there, it can go down to the students, whereas it's a top-down thing. If you send out a broadcast and all 30 students in a classroom get it, and they're starting to show the teacher, all of a sudden, you're pushing this thing from the bottom up, and it's opposite of the protocol that's been put in place by the school systems. And it concerns me.
We don't send out for watches.
They're gonna get it anyways.
You what?
We don't send out, this wouldn't go, we don't send out for watches. The only thing...
Whatever, whatever that might be. I'm just saying, for whatever reason, it would go out. I'm saying that the kids get it, and all of a sudden, you've inverted that, that protocol policy that the schools have. It, it just concerns me in, in that part of it. It concerns me that the 30-member board hasn't seen it yet. You're going to take it to them, and I don't know why we're putting the cart before the horse, so to speak here. And that's why I would be willing to vote the, everything except that. And as Dave said, and ask you, you can bring that back to us. You get your approval there. I would like to see the policy of how it goes out and when it goes out, what you're gonna use it for. I'd like to see that. And then give you full approval to go ahead with it, because I feel like I'm missing a couple of pieces. That's, that's the only, I'm not saying I'm against it. I wanna save lives. I'm not against it. Please help.
Well, we have two options, right? So we could, I mean, throw a motion out, see if it passes, and go...
Duke.
Yes, sir.
Will each jurisdiction have their own opportunity to opt out? Say, if Marysville School District does not want to receive these in the school district?
So, no, it doesn't work that way. So, Marysville School District, i- it doesn't work that way in the community. People, basically like I showed you on this, on this slide, right? So, so you draw a circle or a polygon around that, around that area, and it would alert all those people. But like I said, we would, depending on the type of alert that's already set in our policies and procedures, we would pick the, the group of people that we wanted to alert, depending on the situation that we're alerting to, right? So, we, like, like Russ said, we may or may not pick all of those people, depending on what's going on. And a lot of them are automated alerts, right? So if it's a, if it's a critical situation, it may go to a larger group. Those policies and procedures are already set, and they have been set for a very long time. And that has already been voted through the Homeland Security Advisory Committee. That's been set for a very long time.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna let Commissioner, Commissioner, I, I won't be able to repeat the question, so we have a question.
I'm not, I'm not on the system.
Yes, sir.
Because I didn't sign up.
Right.
And so what you're saying is that you're gonna, now you'll have cellphone numbers. Instead of me signing up, you'll have them, right?
Right.
Which means that I'll get an automatic.
Unless you've opted out, right? If you've, if you've opted out on the do-not-call list, I don't think you've made it, right?
What dictates that my phone actually is in it? The geo-tracking, or where my phone is registered to, like my home address, or my...
It's where your phone is.
Home address.
It is.
Yes.
So, so Sprint, you get the data, and it says that this is where the address is, that the home's registered, this phone's registered to, so therefore you'd be in that.
Correct. However, I think you also have to, once, so, you're registered to the list, and I, I think I answered this. You're registered to the list, but you also, to get the alert, you would have to be in the swath of those cellphone towers to get the alert at that point, right? So like, if you're here, if you're, if you're registered here, but then you're off in Florida or something, you're not gonna get that alert, because you're not in that activation area at that time. But you're just not gonna get it.
But you're gonna get that alert, if you were in an area, it's gonna alert you...
Correct.
Just because you're there.
Because, and, and you're in the data set.
So it's based on your...
Position.
You're on the data list based on...
Right.
Your cur-, your living, your mailing address.
Right.
And wherever you're at, it follows you.
But I, at the winds, I had the option of collecting information if I was someplace else. For example, my son has a cottage on Russell Island, and he lives on the west side of Detroit. He opted in to get information from this particular area. And so he gets that. Greg is gonna go to Florida. Will Greg get information of things that happened? Can he sign up to winds and get it, then?
Through a text alert, I think, would be the only way, right? But not a, not a...
He can sign up with an address within the county.
Yes. If you sign up with an address, then yes. But not with this data set. So if you sign up with an address through the system, yes. But with this data set, then no, because that's an automatic signup. If that makes sense, there's a difference.
I'll call you.
One more. You were gonna wrap this up.
Because, listen to everybody talk here. I'm more on the side of having resident connect now. Is there actually a concern to where the bottom, like he directed, the bottom up would happen, rather than the top down?
So I'm confused.
Just so I'm confused.
Just help me out.
Like a, a school principal, because we talked about schools. I mean, you could be a hospital, you can pick your spot. But they have things in position to where they can control, if you got...
They control the message, is what you're asking.
If you have 500 kids in the school, you don't want 500 kids exiting the doors.
Right.
Makes me feel comfortable about that, that that would not happen.
So like I was saying, one, we don't send out these messages for watches and things like that, right? Those only go to the people that have signed up for those alerts. They don't go out to the, like, the resident connect.
And watch, what about a tornado warning?
So a warning would, because that is a life-safety, life-threatening event. That would go out to the, the wide-circle group, right? That goes out to everybody. A terrorist event happening, like lockdown in your house, get safe now, that happens, right? We are sending that out wide, at the request of the incident commander. If he tells us to lock down in a group, we're telling everybody, because he asked us to. Those types of things are, are the wide-circle group. But, but the normal, like, thunderstorm watch, thunderstorm warning, that stuff doesn't go out to the group. That goes out to the signed-up people that are in, if that makes sense.
I'm sorry.
My only hesitation, I'm not, is it hasn't been to the group. You know, I'm one of these blue meets green guys, kumbaya, bring 50 people in the room. I always say, it's not my bad idea, it's 120 other people's bad idea, right? So, if, either you got a meeting in the next 30 days or whatever, yep, we want it, fine, you know? I'm not, that's just where I'm at on it. So let's, uh, somebody gonna make a motion?
So, just to be clear, you want to have a meeting to ask people if they want to send this message to a group of people, or just to the people that have a landline?
Well, it hasn't been in front of the advisory board, right? Don't we have an advisory board to take in for things like this? And then they say, yep, we love it, that's fine, I'll, you know, whatever, send it back. But it hasn't been, it hasn't been through that. Correct me if I'm wrong.
It hasn't been voted on. It hasn't...
But the only thing, we're not changing policies or procedures. That's...
We're just adding phone numbers.
We're adding a data set.
Is this something they normally wouldn't vote on?
So...
I mean, is it a voteable?
Everything, everything is vetted through that committee. Okay, look at it.
I don't think one person in that room would say, now, let's, for safety and sound, let's, let's don't send a message to everybody. Let's try to eliminate it. Two, three, three-quarters of the people. Let's send a message out to the 9,000 people that we have on the list. Let's don't send it out to the 60,000 that we...
Ultimately, this is just expanding the list.
This is expa-, only expanding the list.
So the, any of the, any of the protocol processes, whatever, then would come out, then would be reviewed by that group and say, this is how we...
If anything changes, it goes in front of HS?
So I think we're getting data set and process kind of all lumped in one, right? We really need to extract the two and just say, okay, expanded that. All right. Somebody make a motion.
All right. So, well, let's start with the full and see where it goes, right? So I, I would make a motion to approve the service contract with Everbridge, including resident connect for a mass notification alert system subscription for a term of 9/1919 through 9/1820, in the amount of $52,874.99.
Second?
Uh, I need more conversation. Roll call, Jay.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
No.
Commissioner Rushing?
I'm gonna go yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Six one.
Okay, move on.
Before you jump on, can I just ask real quickly, can you notify me, or notify this board after you're...
Absolutely.
Taken to the board, let us know their input? And also, can we get a policy, or a copy of the policy that you have in place, or will have in place?
We, we have a policy of procedure for winds. I'm happy to send that over.
Perfect.
We can get that over quickly.
Okay.
George?
Good.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item F, 2019 Edward Ryan Memorial Justice Grant Ward.
I would move to approve the fiscal year 2019 Edward Ryan Memorial Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of $35,666, with the sheriff's department's portion being $14,130, and the city of Port Huron's portion being $21,536.
Second?
Uh, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item G, the 2020 Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Grant Ward.
Chairman Bohm, I'd move to approve the fiscal year 2020 Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Grant in the amount of $209,796.
By George.
Support.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, item H, the Child Care Fund approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Child Care Fund budget in the amount of $5,689,66.52 for the term of 10/119 through 9/30/20.
Support.
Uh, we have Mr. McMillan here, if anyone has any questions for him.
Definitely.
Yep.
Good evening. Questions on the Child Care Fund? I, I somewhat apologize for the letter. It was kind of a Reader's Digest version on how the Child Care Fund works. If you have an extra three weeks, I can have you sit in my office and give you an expanded lesson. But that's kind of what we're looking at. Any specific questions that, that the board has regarding that?
Total cost, how the funds are gonna be used, short.
Pardon me?
What's the total funds, and how's it gonna be spent?
So the total funds, uh...
The short version.
Sure. What we use a Child Care Fund for is, is a couple of different things. And it's divided up into, into three areas, or actually two areas. One's the DHS side. They spend it on neglect, abuse, foster care, children. The court spends it on what we call in-home programming, and then our day treatment, night watch programming. So the day treatment, night watch program is funded out of the Child Care Fund. And then a certain number of our probation officers and, and some ancillary staff are funded out of that as well. So any programs that we provide to youth, drug testing, counseling, if they're in residential placements, you know, if we have to send a kid, you know, off to Wolverine Secure Facility for $100,000 a year, that comes out of that fund. Anything having to do with the delivery of service to delinquent youth, come out of that fund.
What is the total dollars?
Uh, the total, the total that we are asking for this year, from the court standpoint, is, I have to excuse me here, $5,639,66.52, of which the county pays for half, and the state reimburses us for the half that we spend. So if we are asking, you know, 5.6 million, but we spend 4 million, we spend 2 million, the, we get 2 million back from the state for their reimbursement, 50 percent.
Yeah, and I could've got these, but what was last year's figure?
So last year's figures, I can give you 2018, if that's what you're looking for. Our, our total cost last year, just the court side, was 5.2 million dollars. Now, there's funds that are thrown in that mix that aren't spent by the court. And this is kind of where we have that, if you look on your, on your sheet, the State War Board and Care, State War Board and Care is a fund that is used to pay for foster care that the DHS spends. So the Child Care Fund, we spend the money, we bill the state for half, they give us our half back. The State War Board and Care, the state spends the money, bills us for half. So what happens is, let's say the state, and last year they spent, out of that fund, roughly $1.1 million. They spend $1.1 million. That's not our control. That's not, that's not the county's control. The state spends that, of which we owe them $556,000. Okay? So out of the 5.2 million that the court spent, we also spent an additional, when I say we, the county, not the court, spent additional $556,000 on top of that. So the total expenses last year were 5.7 million dollars, okay? 5.2 is what the county, excuse, the, the court spent. 556,000 is what the state spent. So this year, and we had asked for, we've asked for the same amount for the past five years, 5.6 million, is what the court has asked for. Last year, out of that 5.6 million, we spent 5.2 million. Okay?
And if I got any further question I can ask Kerry, but I'm asking you, because out of the three areas, percentage-wise, we'll go with the first one, Child Care Fund. What percent?
Uh, so the, are you talking about the Child Care Fund?
You said three areas, but then you mentioned some other areas where money's spent. But I'll just stick with the three that you have here. You have the Child Care Fund Court, Child Care Fund MDHS, and the State War Board and Care.
Well, I, I can give you amounts from last year, not necessarily percentages. So, 5.2 million is spent on, for the court. The Child Care Fund for DHS side is right around $600,000. And then the State War Board and Care for the DHS side is right around 1.2 million. So the DHS is spending roughly, you know, 1.8 million. And the county is, and the court itself is spending 5.2 million, of which, again, we are responsible for half of that.
But now you're at 7 million.
Well, we are. That's, right. But we spend, and that's, and that's, it's a very convoluted system. You know, there's, there's parts that we pay and parts that we don't pay. But what, ultimately, what, what the county spent last year, the county was responsible for last year, out of the Child Care Fund, we spent 5.7 out of the Child Care Fund. The state spent an additional 1.2.
What you said earlier was, 4 million was actually, the budget last year was actually spent, 2018, which you just told me.
5.2.
Right, but the actual expenditures were 4 million. You said just a little while...
County's portion.
Yeah, 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 the county's portion. The county's paying half the 5.2, and then half of the 1.2.
That's our budget, so that's why I'm asking the question.
Yep. The county's spending half of the 5.2, and then half of the 1.2. So if you take 5.2 plus 1 point, so you're cutting that in half.
And I know it's real important, and I'm asking questions, so...
Right.
If we don't ask questions, then... If we don't ask questions, then...
Absolutely, oh, of course. And trust me, it's a, and it's a moving target. So this year, things change a lot. That Child Care Fund chunk that was the DHS is, is now going back to the DHS.
And I can't, can't imagine this not being approved, but we each get a vote, and, but gotta ask questions, it's a good chunk of money.
So our total expenditure was about 3.2 million?
Uh...
Roughly?
Yeah, yeah, 3.178 million.
Okay.
Any more questions for Michael? Uh, roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item I, the Sheriff Department scheduling software for Schedule Express.
Thank you for your continued support on behalf of the judges and myself, thank you.
See you, Michael.
Thanks, Mike.
Just, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would move the approval of the purchase of the Schedule Express for the Sheriff's Office in the amount of $23,717.
Support?
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item J, the Sheriff Department Video Surveillance System.
I would move to approve the purchase of video surveillance system in the amount of
Support?
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Uh, item K, the 2020 to 2024 CIP Program.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve the 2020 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program as recommended by the Metropolitan Planning Commission.
Second?
Discussion, Howard?
Just a comment, uh, there's a whole lot of work goes in on this, and it's kind of neat to be able to look out, plan the future, and, and get a feel for what the needs of the county are going to be. And there's some really neat projects in there coming up. It's really a neat, neat document.
Okay. Anything else, David?
About 95% I agree with, but there's been some moving targets in this capital improvement. They can always be extended by their point schedule, however we do it, because we had some scheduled for this coming year, and now that's up 2023, which, once with Park and Rec, I talked to Howard about, and, but, we'll address that. It's each individual needs funding, it'll come to this board anyways.
Yeah, uh, some of those projects, as you know, we just had ribbon, ribbon cutting on the first phase of the Blue Water Riverwalk Park. And there are other phases, the, the playgroup coming up in, what, 2021, and then the restroom facility in 2022 or 2023. And I, I walk that park on a regular basis, and I'm always amazed at the number of people down there walking to the wetlands and coming around, and it's just really impressive.
Okay, anything else in CIP? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item L, Brownfield Redevelopment Reappointments.
Mr. Commissioner, I would move to reappoint Paul Maxwell, District Four, John Monte, District Six, John Oshenick...
Oshashanik.
Oshashanik, District Seven, David Struck, Planning Director to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board, each for a three-year term expiring 10/31 of 2022.
Support?
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Um, item, excuse me, on the landfill operation, contract increase with Taliafsky.
I would move to approve the addendum to the landfill operation agreement with Taliafsky Excavating LLC, increasing not to exceed amount to 400,000 for the additional work.
Support?
Discussion, uh, roll call.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item N, the 2019 Budget Adjustments.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve the 2019 Budget Adjustments in the amount of $712,827 as presented.
Discussion, roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item O, the 2020 Medicare Advantage Renewal.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the 2020 Medicare Advantage Renewals as presented.
Support?
Uh, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item P, the KeyScan Building Access Controls Upgrade.
I would move to award an agreement to Dyke Security Services for the upgrade to the KeyScan Building Access Control to the Ora platform in an amount not to exceed $17,714.46.
Second?
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item R, landfill soil project.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the business loan agreement, irrevocable letter of credit, promissory note, and disbursement request and authorization for the landfill Parker Road South Conservation Easement in the amount of $95,000 as presented, and to designate Kerry Hepting and Danielle Hazelwood as authorized signatories.
Support?
Discussion, uh, roll call.
Mr. Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item T, Resolution 19-15, supporting four-year commissioner terms.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to adopt Resolution 1915, supported passage of legislation to adopt four-year terms for county commissioners.
Support?
Uh, Bill, you put this on the agenda, do you want to say anything regarding, about it?
Um, just that, I think it kind of smoothes things out for the operations of the county. Every other elected official in the county, with the exception of judges, is on a four-year term. Put the commissioners on a four-year term, works out well. It does some other things, too. It allows you to start projects and do things that you cannot get done in a two-year period. We've been working on the library for several, two, three years, and I've been on that. If I wasn't on it and wasn't been replaced after two years, maybe that next person wouldn't pick up the gauntlet that I had for the library. When we did the convention center, Chairman Bohm was the big impetus about getting that done. If he would've been replaced after two years, that project probably may have fallen by the wayside, somebody may not have picked that up. And I find that to be true, that we go ahead and move it in that direction. In addition to that, I believe it adds a lot of continuity to what we're doing here as a board. This board, this particular board, has been moving in a direction, and even though we are seven individuals responsible for two things, one for our district, two for our county as a whole, the seven of us work independently and we think independently, as you heard tonight in a discussion about one particular event. But we all tend to move and pull in the same direction. That allows administration to understand more fully where the board wants to go, which allows administration then to let the department heads know where administration wants to go. And the department heads then can let the employees below them know that the direction they're going. So the employees are working, the, the building, our department heads are working, administration's working, and the board is working, and they're all pulling in the same direction. And when you can do that on a four-year term as opposed to a two-year term, I think that continuity stays there. I've been a proponent of this since I've been on the board, and I think it's extremely important that we head down that road. All of your cities do the same thing, they're on a four-year term, your, um, where'd you work at? Township, thank you.
Township supervising.
Townships, they're on a four-year term. I don't see any reason why the Board of Commissioners should not be on that.